All right, we're calling this meeting to order. Item 1.1 and at this time 1.2, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Gallo.
Okay, please stand and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me if you would. I'm going to move back so you can see the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, united in the God, indivisible, infinite, ever to be.
Thank you.
We will now move to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
So move, Scott Wyatt.
Okay.
Starting with Mr. Tillman. We're taking a voice vote, vote, sorry. Can you hear me?
Aye.
All right, Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Thank you. We will now move to 2.1, public comments. And this is a time that the members of the public are provided an opportunity to address the board about the topic listed under open session. Comments are limited to five minutes or less. Individuals with comments on any other subject matter within the board's jurisdiction may address those during a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We have received some public comments that will be coming in or have come in will be read by Karen.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
We have four public comments. And the first one is from Shanta, S-H-A-N-T-A. She's a parent. And she said, when will our seniors be graduating or at least get a diploma? We worked too hard not to hear or know anything about it. And do we get our money back for all of these activities for graduation? That's it for that one. The next one is from Mia Cooper. She's a parent. And she says, as we walk into this journey of the unknown and not knowing what is going to happen next, I would like to take this time to thank the school board for their tough decision they had to make over three weeks ago to close the school down for the betterment of all staff and students. While moving forward, I would like to thank all staff members and police officers for their services behind the scenes, making sure our kids were safe during the time of the closure. Also, I would like to thank the Special Education Department during this difficult time. They have to serve the most delicate students in our district, which takes a lot of hard work, and to make sure those kids receive the services they need at home. Also, I would like to thank all school board members for making sure our students have the tools they need to be successful in their learning. While some of us are having ups and downs, as a parent, I would like to assure the parents that the school board members are working hard to make sure our students come back to a safe and clean environment. And for seniors that are going to graduate this year, because you will graduate, it's never too late to have a prom, a graduation, or to enjoy grad night. As the saying would go, you leave the best for last, and that's what Class 2020 is doing. You will have your special day and your special moment, but please be patient as we go through this difficult time. Thank you all, because in order for the dream to work, we have to have teamwork. Go, go San Bernardino City Unified School District.
Great message.
Very nice.
Our next one is from E. Negretti. And she says, good evening, board members. During this learning curve for all, parents, teachers, and our children, I hope that you make decisions that give due consideration for non-common core curriculum, which would allow more parents to have the understanding and knowledge to support the learning of their children who will now be learning at home. Also, for your consideration, I strongly encourage San Bernardino City Unified School District to contact and partner with homeschool-based businesses that have been providing enriched education for K-12 homeschooled children. I believe they are the experts who can assist SBCUSD at navigating through home-based learning in order to reach the best possible outcome for our children's education. Thank you for your time and consideration. And our final one comes from Trevon Martin. Good evening, board. My name is Trevon Martin, and I'm the Public Affairs and Community Engagement Representative from the California School Boards Association. Tonight is my last time addressing you in this capacity. I have accepted the appointment to lead Ontario International Airport Authority's new Community Engagement Department. Moreover, I applaud the board for their decision to close schools and save lives due to COVID-19. As we navigate this new world of living, I encourage the board to take a deep look into distance learning beyond packets for students. We know the achievement gap exists for many students, but we have to take a stand and help stop that gap from getting wider. Limited direct instruction from a certificated teacher is what is needed at this time. For support and other questions, please rely on Denise Lopez-Pacer from Riverside until a replacement is found. It was a pleasure serving the members of Region 16. And that's it for the public comments, thank you.
Thank you, Karen, I appreciate it. All right, we're now going to get into our updates, and we know that the public is watching along with us. And as promised, this is our board meeting update in reference to the COVID-19. So I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Volkuma.
Thank you, Madam President. Board, we're excited to share with you what we've been up to over the last few weeks in terms of our planning in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. Before we begin, I'd love to be able to thank everyone who has stepped up to the plate. But time won't permit me to do that individually, but I can share with you that people at every level of the organization have done their best to provide service to make sure we're heading in the right direction. So I just want to thank them wherever they were providing that service. And especially tonight, I want to thank our Communications Department and our IT Department in conjunction with Karen Cunningham for making this a reality and allowing us to have our board meeting done virtually this evening. It was a heavy lift, they worked very hard at it, and they delivered, so we're thankful for that. If we could pull up the PowerPoint. And I don't have it on my screen, so David, I don't know if you're putting that up.
I think it's coming. There it is.
I'm hoping, board, that you can all see that. I wanted to call to your attention, first of all, right in the middle of the page, our theme for our presentation tonight is doing our part to flatten the curve. And as you know and have heard over and over and over again, everybody has a responsibility based on the governor's stay-safe-at-home order to do our part to flatten the curve. So as we have approached our work and moved forward with our plans, that's been a central theme for us, is to do our part to flatten the curve. We know that the best way to contain and ultimately battle this virus is for people to stay away from each other. And while that's probably very unnatural for us, we do know that that's something we have to keep in mind as we're moving forward with our plans. So David, if you would, advance the slide, please.
I don't see the PowerPoint, I don't know if I'm the only one.
I can see it.
I can't see it either. It's Dr. Flores.
You might have to change the selection you have for your layout.
I can see it, I can see it.
You go to bottom right-hand corner and click the three dots. And then when you says change layout, I did the sidebar.
I have the sidebar, okay, I have the sidebar.
That worked, Daddy, thank you.
No problem. I've been doing it for 35 years.
What will we do without you?
But we still don't see his picture.
No. Does everyone else have it up in front of them now? That was me and...
Yes, I have it.
Okay.
I have it, thank you.
Alrighty.
Great, so on the title page that you might have missed, our theme tonight is doing our part to flatten the curve, and these are our objectives. We want to update the board on district operations in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. We want to review our district's plan in particular to transition to a distance learning platform. And then we'd like to get some feedback from the board on recommendations around meal distribution, childcare, and senior activities. So that will come toward the end of the presentation. Daniel, if you could please advance the slide. So board, through all of our planning, and we've had dozens and dozens and dozens of people involved in this, we basically were focused on keeping in mind two core values. And those core values were, first of all, that every student, when they come back from spring break on April 6th, that they would have something meaningful to do, that they would have something engaging, whether that's a packet or distance learning or whatever it would be, but that we would be prepared on April 6th to bring back something engaging for students. So that's guided our work thus far. The other core value that we've had, and it goes back to flattening the curve, and that is we want to minimize exposure for staff and students to COVID-19. As we're getting our work done and planning for services, we want to make sure that we are minimizing interaction as much as we possibly can so that we reduce the possibility of spreading the virus. And so we've kept those two things in mind throughout all of our work, from the very, very first day actually through now. And I'm excited to be able to share with you some of the things, we're excited to share with you some of the things that have been going on. I want to give one quick reminder before I turn it over to our team to begin to present, and that is, we are still building this plane as we're flying it. Not all of the planning is 100% complete. We will be working throughout the rest of this week and through the coming weeks to make sure that we're learning, getting better the entire time. But we're not at all done yet. And so what you're seeing is an update on our work to date. And then we will continue to give you updates as we move forward in subsequent board meetings. So at this time, it's my pleasure to turn it over to the team, and we'll go ahead and advance the slide, David.
Good evening, board. Eric Vettier here, your Safety and Emergency Manager, leading the Incident Management Team, boots on the ground for this operation. Our primary objective is to take the priorities that are set by our policy group, which is yourselves and Cabinet, and handle those missions on a day-to-day basis. Part of that is coordinating with our both state, local, and federal authorities, making sure we have real-time information from them and that we're providing that up the chain and also out to our stakeholders. We're monitoring the pandemic trends as they grow, both locally, regionally, and over the state and federal levels. We're ensuring that our response is coordinated. So we're taking all the needs and requests and ensuring that it matches the objectives that were set by the board and by Cabinet as we manage this crisis. Working with our communications team and all the info that we do get in, making sure that we're disseminating and gathering real-time information and that it's factual and that it's accurate. We all know there's a lot of sources out there. Everyone with a phone is able to type stuff. And so we want to make sure that anything that comes in and that's sent out to our stakeholders is factual. We're acquiring and deploying personnel and resources, so we know there's a shortage in supplies and the vendors to get them there. So we want to make sure that everything we order meets the missions and the objectives as we manage the incident. And then keeping track of the costs of this crisis and making sure that we're able to recover every dollar we can to get it back into the educational system at the end of this. That's my update, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Linda, and I would just like to give a brief update on what we're doing in communications. As you can see, we're using a wide variety of communication tools to reach parents, students, and our employees. We not only send out robo calls, we've also relaunched our 888 Kids emergency hotline number. We're sending out regular messages via email, social media, and website. And we're also using our district's mobile app to push notifications out to everyone who's taken the time to download the app. Next slide. We made a commitment to send out daily robo calls to our families so that they know exactly what we're doing to continue to support education in San Bernardino. We average about 40,000 delivered calls each time we've sent out a robo call. We're also happy that our community has responded and is now using our 888 Kids hotline number to receive updates. We're sending daily management team updates in the form of a What's Happening Team newsletter that's mailed out each day to give and share with the employees and managers critical steps the district is taking to ensure that we have a smooth operation as we move forward towards launching our distance learning plan. Our website continues to attract lots of visitors. Our daily average of just under 20,000 visits to the Ready SBCUSD webpage is an indication that our community knows where to get critical information as we all go through this temporary school closure. We're also continuing to use social media to announce different opportunities to help our students and to remain connected. Next slide, please. Our Printing Services team has done a tremendous job to meet the needs to prepare learning packets for our students. The learning packets were printed over the past week. We've had 27,390 packets printed so far, and that is a result of 479 separate work orders that have come into Printing Services. Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to business operations, I have three questions. So Mr. Tillman, Ms. Medina, and then Dr. Flores. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, and I was going to wait until after the entire presentation.
Okay. And I believe Ms. Medina had a question for Eric.
Yes, my question is regarding the masks and gloves. Are we ensuring that all those that have interaction? Because I know that this was one of my concerns before the students went on spring break, was the fact that how are we ensuring that those interacting with other people have those items such as masks and gloves if there is constant contact? Or what does that look like?
Thank you, Ms. Medina. So our Nutrition Services teams are out, they do have masks and gloves on. And we have a safety team that's out this week that's building the plan for the packet distribution that's going to occur next week. So they're actually visiting the sites to put a procedure in place for how that should look to include distance, gloves that may be needed, etc. So there's going to be a written plan and guidance for each one of our school sites as it relates to that.
Okay, so you're saying that everyone is practicing using the gloves and the masks?
Yes.
Okay, and the other question would be because of the food that we do have with our Nutrition Department. They, from the last time, I've noted that there is food that can be expired. Are we planning to, what are we planning to do with the good food that we do have? If maybe that might be a way of distributing it to the community before it expires? I know that there was food, because of the closure of the schools, lots of food that can be utilized instead of throwing it away. It can be used by the community or providing that to the community themselves, if that's a possibility.
Ms. Medina, this is Janie. So they adjust the number of meals they're serving based on their numbers. So you're correct, there were extra meals at the beginning. And they also donate to some different nonprofits. So I can get more information to you.
Yeah, please do, because I know that the last time I was there, there was a lot of food that was going to go to waste. And just making sure that if we still have those foods, if there is a way that we do provide that for the community, even for neighboring, within the city residents, our senior communities, and so forth.
Thank you. And then Dr. Flores, was your question to a particular person?
To both Eric and Linda. You know, I'm always concerned if we have the communication in Spanish. So just wanted to have an update from both of you. If all the things that you just showed are also in Spanish for our parents.
Dr. Flores, this is Linda, and I want to assure you that we're taking every possible opportunity to provide every message in Spanish to our community. We've recently started updating more of our social media posts to make sure that in case community members don't realize that they can hit translate on a Facebook post, so we're making steps to actually provide the graphics in Spanish. All of our robo calls go out in English and Spanish. And one of the things I'm most proud of my team for doing is on our district's website at the Ready SBCUSD, we post the exact message from the robo call in both English and Spanish. We know sometimes people miss part of a phone message, and so we're posting that both in English and Spanish. And all other communication is also being posted in both languages as well.
So does that also include all the website posts that we have?
Yes, and one of the things, we appreciate the board's support of allowing us to use School Messenger, because any visitor to the website can select to view the entire website in Spanish. So, or a number of languages, Spanish being just one of them. So we appreciate the fact that we were able to get such a sophisticated provider so that we can always provide that to our community.
That's great. Thank you so much.
All right, I think we're moving now to Ms. Christakos, were you up next? Business and Operations?
Yes, thank you. So, board, good evening. I'm just giving you an update, the essential operations are functioning as normal as can be expected, doing as much of the work remotely as we can and practicing social distancing. We do have our warehouse open, and we have the team split. So half of them, they alternate days so that we can keep that social distancing. We're working to provide remote access to 500-plus users so they can access systems and get their work done remotely. Co-leading a committee with accountability and ed tech to provide devices, connectivity, and support for distance learning. And Dr. Mitchell will talk more about that later in the presentation. And our students have had access to the Google platform, but we've now enabling the student emails to increase their collaboration. Next slide, please. So Maintenance and Operations has sanitized the interiors and exteriors. We've had some different activity with handing out packets. So we will do that again before we resume work. And so the playgrounds, interior spaces, everything will be sanitized again. We have a plan in place prior to occupancy. As you know, Nutrition Services has been providing the drive-through grab-and-go lunch and the next-day breakfast daily to children 18 years of age and younger. And approximately 3,300 meals are being distributed daily. And just so everyone knows, it is open enrollment for our employees, for their benefits. All of the current plans will automatically roll over unless the employee requests a change. They'll be reaching out to everyone to set up an appointment in case there are any questions. So we expect this to go very well. I actually got my call today. Next slide, please.
Good evening, board. This is Tom Halderson in Human Resources. So I just have two slides. The first one really basically is we're working with all the sites and departments in regards to limiting employees at the work sites as much as possible, as we've discussed. We also have Mary Pierce is on the Distance Learning Initiative, which is a huge initiative that Keenan and others will talk about in the next few slides. But probably the biggest thing we're doing is, the next slide, please. We are very busy working with all four of our employee groups. CSEA, we did reach a tentative agreement with them last week. And that will be going to board at the next board meeting on April the 7th. SBTA, we have had two meetings so far. We met today. We'll also be meeting with them on Thursday. And the Police Officers Association and the Communication Workers of America will also be meeting with them on Friday. So we're busy with all four groups, working on the impact that all these workers have had on employees. And that's it from our division.
Good evening, board. It's good to see all of you. Preparing, reading the guidance from both the state and federal level. It has been quite interesting to see how both our state and federal guidance is trickling down. And so there's a little bit of limited guidance, I guess I can say. And so we'll share with you how we're approaching this. Because ultimately, the state is saying that each district needs, to the extent possible, meet the timelines of IEPs, given the restrictions of the social distancing. And so in San Bernardino City, we have more than 7,000 special needs students on IEPs, each with unique goals and needs. The guidance states, to the extent feasibly possible, IP timeline should be met. However, during the school closure, districts are not required to adhere to all timelines as this is considered a break in service, similar to when we go on winter break. So you can see that there's a little bit of confusion there. So this is how we're approaching it. We are going to be training our schools to develop what we're calling a compliance calendaring plan. They will, they are, they have two times and they can get trained on how they're going to do this. We're looking at it as a proactive team approach by school to meet the state and federal guidelines. We're providing a template to them where they can track and monitor any IEPs that may have now gone out of compliance due to the school closure and have a plan to where they can either hold IEPs telephonically through phones, if possible, virtual IEPs, if possible. And if those two don't work based on the individual need of the student, the family, and the school, then we have to have a plan in place for as soon as school closes, closures are back open, that we can then meet those timelines. So you can see that it's each individual case. That's why we're having each school create a plan so they can prioritize and be ready for when schools can open. We also know that in our district, we have what we like to call Islands of Excellence, schools that have very strong compliance monitoring tools in place. Our goal in all of this is to improve our systems. And instead of having Islands of Excellence, we're going to have a continent of excellence called SBCUSD. So when we come out on the other side of all of this, we will have some nice monitoring tools on how to meet these very challenging timelines. So more to come on that, but our schools will be trained. And the approach is to move this work down to the school level. It is ultimately the school teams that are responsible for meeting these IEP timelines. So that's one element of special education. The next one is our family outreach. As you heard, we have district-wide outreach going for our families. Each school has their family outreach plan and how they're approaching engaging with their families. And of course, that includes the families of students with special needs. The Special Education Department is one layer on top of that. On our SBCUSD website, Linda mentioned that we have a Family Resource Page. We have a link within that that offers some resources to our parents for special needs students. So that's one element. This week, we will be sending out formal notifications, they're called prior written notices, to all of our families who have students with IEPs, letting them know what the legislation is saying around compliance and our approach to the services that will be offered. Included in that packet, we're going to give them a one-page virtual resource where they can also have some digital resources that they can go to to support their children while they're at home. And then finally, the Special Education Department has committed two weekly robo calls. They're going to do those on Wednesdays, just letting the parents know what's the most updated information and to be on the lookout for whatever is happening in the special ed world. Finally, the meal distribution. You may recall that before we went on spring break, we were doing kind of a reverse transportation to our most vulnerable special needs students where we were delivering food to their homes. We are recommending that we start that again when spring break is over. The students we are specifically referring to are medically fragile and severely handicapped students. These are the children that are most vulnerable in terms of their health and safety. We'd rather them be home and things, the food brought to them, rather than going to regional locations. So that is a recommendation. the food brought to them, rather than going to regional locations. So that is a recommendation that we're making as part of our meal distribution. We had called homes of those families, and about 450 would like to continue the service, 450 out of about 650. So the Special Education Department will continue to engage with those families, but again, in the best, the interest of our students, the most vulnerable ones, keeping them at home and safe is our first and foremost, and feeding them in that location is what we're recommending. The Distance Learning Plan and the academic side of the work for special education, you will hear more of that as we go through the distance learning with Dr. Mitchell, because we are, there's a strong collaboration going on to ensure this for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menares. And I know the next couple of slides are going to get a little bit deeper. Dr. Flores, did you have a question in reference to the previous two slides?
Yes, I did. I wanted to ask Janie. Thank you, everybody, for all the work that you're doing before I go on. I just wanted to be, make it clear, because some parents have told me that they thought the grab-and-go meals were only for people with cars. So I'm wondering if we have parents coming that are just walking up. And, and also, Linda, does our robo call include that they can walk up without a car?
Well, thank you, Dr. Flores, for bringing that to our attention. I worked with my team to reword some of the messaging that we had outgoing to our families regarding the free meals. So we rephrased it once you brought it to our attention and let people know that they can walk up, bike, ride, do whatever they can to get to a school site to receive those free meals. So I'm glad we're working as a team, and as we make missteps, we're getting things back in line and doing what we can to support the community.
Okay, so the robo calls have been updated, and so parents can just walk up, and they know that they can. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
That's great, because we know we did witness them coming up too, but clarification is even better. Ms. Medina?
No, I just wanted to mention, there was three of those board members the last Friday, and so they, we did have a lot of students' families come walk, and then, of course, ride their bikes. So yes, they are coming, they're coming up. They don't need vehicles, just to, to share that. We actually went through that. But just clarification is great, too.
Absolutely. Okay, I believe, is it Dr. Perez? Are you next?
Yes, I am next. Good evening, Board. As you're aware, provided childcare at all elementary school sites. The topics that I'll be covering and providing updates are around childcare and mental health services. So during the week of March 16th, we provided childcare at all elementary school site. The information you see before you outlines the participation rates for that week. On Monday, March 16th, there were 58 students, including 19 children of staff. In many cases, the children of staff were the children of those responsible for providing childcare. On Tuesday, March 17th, we saw a high of 78 students in childcare across the district, which averages to just over one student per school site. By Thursday, April 19th, we had 50 students, with 13 of those students being children of our staff. Based on these rates, we are recommending that as a district, we meet the needs of families needing childcare via childcare referral agencies, as well as those local childcare programs. Our district team has compiled a comprehensive resource for parents outlining our local childcare program, which in many cases includes a personal contact and preliminary information related to cost. We have contacted each of these agencies personally from our staff, and in speaking with their representatives, it is recommended for parents to contact and work with the childcare program directly to secure the most accurate information regarding cost based on their individual circumstance. I do want to share that many of the childcare programs on our list are subsidized by the government and designed to work for families in need, so that the issue of cost was of our primary concern and what we addressed with each of the agencies as we had contact with them. So with that, I'll move on to the mental health. Our team is really working diligently to develop a continuum of services for general health as well as mental health. This approach provides support for teachers and administrators as we begin functioning in our evolving learning environment. The continuum will address how students that already receive health and mental health services will continue to receive those services, as well as a process for how to identify and refer students that may be in need. Our internal team has been gearing up to provide virtual services to our students, as well as working diligently with partners such as Hazel Health, IEHP, Victor Community, and Uplift to ensure that we have the appropriate resources to meet our students' needs. That is the update that I have to provide this evening with relation to childcare and mental health.
Alright, and let me check. I believe, you're going into distance learning, or is that a different? Is it still you, Doctor?
No, that is not. That is actually moving into Dr. Mitchell's.
Okay, so I'm going to pause again right here, because I know Dr. Mitchell's presentation is pretty deep, and I know that, I see Ms. Medina has a question. I think it's in reference to your presentation.
Yeah, it's regards to the childcare. So my thing is that, I, I was wondering, those, those, those resources that you were looking up, are they, are they, are they full? Are they, do they have a waiting list? Because I've, like many other families, have at one point reached out to those organizations you listed, YMCA and all of that. During that time, there was a long waiting list, and of course, even then, it depended on the income. So then I'm curious to see, have you vetted to see if they're available versus not being available? Is it a long waiting list or so forth?
Yes, thank you for that question. We did go through that process, and we have, you saw the BCI, I believe, and there's another attachment to that, outlining more information, more detailed information. We did speak with, we asked for a contact from each place, because if a parent contacts us and says they're having a hard time, we want to be able to use that personal touch to reach back out and say, hi, this is, you know, so-and-so from San Bernardino City Unified. We spoke about having some priority for our families. So we're happy to help parents, you know, with that personal touch, because we've created relationships with these agencies, really to try to ensure that our students get priority for, for those locations.
But there's no guarantee, and so I'm wondering if there's a way we can either contract through them or just making sure that we're providing access. Honestly, this is something that, you know, I, I know that even when it wasn't during hard times, it was a struggle. And I just can't imagine how it is now during hard times, how much of a struggle that is. I understand that you wouldn't necessarily, we in the district wouldn't be doing all 50 school sites, elementary school sites, but we can narrow it to maybe one location. Of course, what that looks like, I'm not sure. But even if it was to hire out or bring in someone, so I just want to make sure that we're, I know the recommendation is to use outside resources, but these are our children, and I know that we even had staff members have their children within the childcare that we're taking advantage, which is awesome. I really appreciate that. But I don't think that these agencies may, and I know Dr. Hill has a, has a question or comment regarding it as well. And I, I just don't feel like they may be prepared for that. So I would not necessarily go with the recommendation that the district has, but I want to hear from Dr. Hill.
Alright, so next is Mr. Gallo, and then Dr. Flores, and then Dr. Hill?
Yep, thank you. I actually had a question for Janie. Janie, we got construction going on throughout the district and kind of various retrofit projects, including, you know, the greenhouse project, et cetera, San Andreas. Is it possible for the team to continue to work in the greenhouse over this shutdown where students aren't there and they can set up equipment and things like that? Have we heard, have we thought about that?
Yes, Tom Pace and Legal have been working on that. We're looking at projects that were, are near completion. And so we're working through a process and on which sites and which projects we can proceed with. So it's not finalized yet, but that's what we're working on.
Yeah, if we could throw that one in the hopper, I think it's a, it's a great time while, you know, they're not crowds and students and, and people kind of, you know, in, in the outdoor area, especially inside, you know, the greenhouse piece. So just, yeah, we can, we can talk about that sometime. And the childcare stuff, the, you know, when I saw, I saw the numbers and the latest numbers for them, I think, yeah, I, I agree with staff's recommendation on, on certainly not having 50 school sites off of a childcare. It's, you know, there would, I think the last count was like 50 kids of our students that were availing themselves with, for that service. And, you know, we had hundreds of staff available coming in, 580 staff or something that were, that were in our, you know, district and, and supporting that, that effort. You know, we didn't really have an idea on how many students we'd be, we'd be seeing, but we should, I definitely agree with the scaleback of it. And of course, you know, you don't want very many kids in any one given area either. So might be interesting just to try out and see how the outside sport works. If it doesn't, I know Abigail raised the question of maybe having one site open where we could, you know, have, have a few, three, four classes or something like that of students in there. But I, I think just the, you know, the, the risk, I mean, here we are in a shutdown. I mean, we really want to abide by the governor's stay-at-home policy, and it really, it's a risk to bring too many people together in a, in a, in a facility. So I know those are the consternations we're dealing with.
And so, if I can share some information, our, our staff is watching, and they have reassured me that any agency that made it to the list was because they had openings. And I think this situation that we're in creates a situation that we have not had before, obviously. But Abigail, to answer your question, these agencies are actually looking for students, because as you can imagine, the stay-at-home order has required most of their, the people that they typically serve are now at home, not needing childcare. So actually, there's a, a need that they can meet and our need, and we're also helping them out, because they are not having as many students, as you can imagine, going to their childcare centers as well, because most parents are employed in places where their stay-at-home is, has been enacted, and they're not going to work.
And can I follow up with that, then? Is it, then I guess, I guess it would go back to the cost as well? What that looks like, because if, if they're being charged, because I know even if they're low income, there's still a, a charge that is sometimes more than, you know, I could afford during that time. I remember even with YMCA, it was still expensive, even with my low income during that time. So we weren't able to do it. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way where the district, if there's only 50 students or 60 students, that we're able to help compensate with that cost?
And yes, that, that is what our conversations have been, yes, being that there is a conversation to be had between the agency and the families. That's exactly why they said they have so many resources to help out our families who are in need, because most of them are subsidized, you know, have government grants or different funding that allow them to do that.
Alright, Dr. Flores?
Yes, just a minute. I just put it on. My question to you, Dr. Perez, was those organizations vetted, I didn't see the, the list. I can't see the list. Would that include Victor Communities?
Are, are you talking about the childcare or the mental health services?
The health services.
Oh, yes. Victor Community is one of our greatest partners. Yes, they, they are outlined specifically on our mental health services.
I know that parents have come to me in the past and told me they wouldn't serve them because they didn't have medical insurance or any type of medical, you know, well, any type of medical. So I wonder, you know, if our parents, are there other options that they can go to?
Yes, yes, we actually have a multi-pronged approach for this, so families that can't be seen because of not having medical are actually, it's possible for them to receive the service from our employees, as well as a few other partners. So we have looked at all of those options and are bringing forth a comprehensive approach for both health and mental health services.
Okay, great.
I appreciate the question.
And I wanted to just expand on Ms. Medina's concern. I think that, you know, as we move forward with this, you know, closure, I think we have to keep our options open if, you know, more parents need daycare. We don't know what, 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 you know, what it's going to bring, if they have to go back to work and they need daycare and they can't, you know, maneuver the organizations that you've posted, that you've listed. I would just like us to keep our, our options open as, you know, as we move forward to not just totally say we're closing it down forever, but if, if there is a need that somehow we do have the option to reinstate, you know, possible care, caretaking, caregiving. Thank you.
Dr. Hill? Dr. Hill? Are you there? Are you muted? On mute?
Okay, I think I'm ready now. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Perez. My question's on child, excuse me, childcare only. And I have three questions. The first one is, would it be feasible for us to look at two central locations, since we have so few kids? And it seemed to be dwindling each time. The second question, what, what is the time of day for childcare? From what time until what time? And then, are we talking about possible calendar providing childcare? Even if school is not, will not open for May or the 1st of June, are we providing childcare up to that time?
Okay, thank you for those questions. So I know that later in the presentation, you, the board will have opportunity for discussion around this topic. So I heard you mention two central locations. And so we'll, we'll, you know, the board has, has the right to accept, modify, reject the recommendations, so we will take guidance from the board based on your discussion later in the presentation. So two central locations, Dr. Hill, we can do whatever the board sees fit for us to do. Do, you know, we do want to keep in mind that the recommendation came forth with the consideration of safety for all of our staff and, and just, you know, the, the orders that have come forth from Governor Newsom, and with really seriousness in mind around reducing the opportunity for congregating and settings for students. So just know that that was the crux of, of our, the recommendation that came forth. As far as time for childcare, we were running childcare from 7:45 to 4:30. That was the time that we were operating the week of March 16th. And then your question around, will we run childcare all the way through the end of the school year? If we should not return to school, is that what you were asking, Dr. Hill?
That's correct.
Okay, so child, the recommendation that we're making would be that it go to a childcare facility, and yes, we would expect then students to be receiving childcare through those facilities. If the board sees for us to take a different action and provide two central locations, or however we work that out, then yes, that would then, I imagine, be provided through the end of the academic school year.
Okay, thank you. And, and I just want to certainly do a clarification here. Asking about the central locations, I just happened to think of that, because there were so few parents taking advantage of the childcare. I'm in no way bored making a recommendation. uh, parents taking advantage of the childcare. I'm in no way bored making a recommendation and I, I will not make a recommendation that they look into that. Uh, you know, uh, we're talking, I'm talking to the expert now and I know Dr. Perez and her team is gonna do what's best for our young, young ones. So that, that was certainly not a motion or asking to go back to the drawing board, because I know you got plenty to do and don't want you to think for one minute of asking you to research central location. I, it came up in my mind and so I just wanted to share it, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. And I think it's also great that you're looking out for those organizations that are trying to still weather through this storm if they're able to pick up, you know, additional, uh, students to help and support those that have to work. Um, lastly, um, before we move to the next slide, is on the mental health side, and I know, uh, one organization just asked a question this week. Will they be doing an MOU or will you requiring something for them that they need to do that they would reach out to your department?
Yes, our staff, and I think I know which agency you're referring to. Our staff will be getting in contact with them. They were waiting for us to share this information with the board tonight. And should everything seem, um, you know, good to go from our board, then they would do, uh, take care of the MOU.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're gonna move, like I said, this next, um, presentation is pretty lengthy. Mr. Tillman, I know you were waiting to the end of the presentation. Are you okay? Or was your question back further on?
Now, I, I have questions throughout the, from earlier about was gonna wait to after.
Well, he isn't gonna be a little bit more. So if you, do you wanna try to?
Yeah, I know, because, uh, Dr. Hill been talking a lot tonight, so I better slip in here.
Go ahead.
First of all, I wanna, I do wanna thank all the staff that are going out to work. I know, you know, we say we want, uh, we want everybody to go home and self-distance and social distance, but we still want folks to have childcare and food. Just realize that those are people that have to do that and they're taking risks. And I know as the numbers go up and, uh, we hear more and more about people getting sick and infected and people dying, that the fear level is gonna go up and we understand that. And I just wanna make, I just, I wanna make sure the board, um, has a good feel for that. Uh, because, like, for instance, the request that, uh, Mr. Gallimay, I really think it should be voluntary if they wanna go to San Andreas to, you know, make sure that, that device is operating. Because I think we have to weigh the fear of, um, getting the virus and getting sick and having to go back to our kids and family and loved ones. That's what everybody's mind right now. So I just hope that, uh, we don't lose sight on that. A- and, and I really do appreciate uh, the folks that are, are the essential employees that go out and still do the work. You know, everybody wants a, a student to have a Chromebook, right? So, uh, but a person, a person actually ha- has to do that. So I, I, and I understand that. People are feeding kids and cleaning our buildings. And so you have to be around other people. So I understand the concern, but I just want all the staff to know that the board, um, truly does appreciate that. With the distance learning, in terms of the, the Chromebooks, uh, I don't know how much saturation we have in terms of how many of our students actually have Chromebooks now. And I had a parent, uh, I went to the website. Thanks for having a link on there, Ms. Bardear, in terms of having it on the main page. But when they called the number, they told them they could get a Chromebook on April the tenth. And I'm hoping all that's in the planning in terms of making sure that we get these devices out. And if we have limited amount of devices right now, I hope that we're allocated them to the households that do not have a device already. Whether it's one to district that issue or whether it's one that they own on their own. I think that's important. Um, and then on the, the subject of the, the notification that's going out to the, uh, special education, uh, households, and you said it would be a phone call, um, Dr. Banares. But my question was, uh, is that gonna include the charter schools that, that have seminars with us? Are we gonna include them in making those phone calls, uh, for those people?
That's a really good question, uh, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Narita Gutierrez, our Assistant Director of Com- Compliance, she told me today they're actually partnering with, um, Ms. Hopwood, our Charter School Director, and there will be a training, um, for our charter schools, I believe, next Monday. And so we are including them on everything.
Okay. And then last, I, I, I just wanna make sure that with, i- any direction we go on distant learning, just, uh, realizing, accept that, um, a lot of our kids don't live in a perfect household. And a lot of them, uh, are dealing with chaos. Some of them are dealing with, uh, even abuse. Do the studies say that since, uh, people have, have been forced to stay home, that, uh, spouse abuse and child abuse is up? So I hope that we understand that and that we're patient with, uh, the folks that we have actually, uh, staying at home. And last, I know the, 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 the information's coming out now and I saw a statement that Trayvon sent me, where there was a statement from the Department of Education to superintendents, uh, a- actually stating that, uh, we probably won't go back to school before, uh, the end of the school year. And, and, and it lines up with the study on CNN that said, uh, while Louisiana is expected to, to be hit hardest on April the tenth, the model prediction that California's peak will come about two weeks later, giving the state more time to prepare. But that means that we're gonna see the peak in people getting the illness and dying closer to the end of April, beginning of May. So you can imagine, that's not gonna be a time when people be, even wanna consider opening schools. So I think it's obvious that, uh, we're gonna have to take action to not open schools, uh, before the, the end of this year. And then the big question becomes, uh, do we delay opening the school? Because I really think we should move the opening to September to give ourselves the biggest distance possible between the virus subsiding and then starting school. Thank you.
So those are some things definitely we have heard and we've received information on. And even though we're in our special board meeting, we'll, some of those things we will definitely have to discuss in our upcoming regular board meeting. So thank you for that, Mr. Tillman. I think, um, Dr. Volkmer would like to also clarify some information. Dr. Volkmer? You unmute?
I'm unmuting. Thank you. Thank you, President Rogers. Uh, yeah, Mr., um, Tillman, I do have the letter, uh, from our state superintendent in front of me and I, I will, I had planned to, um, discuss it very briefly at the end of our presentation. You'll allow me, I'll circle back to that one when we're done.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, um, Dr. Mitchell, I think we are ready to hear about our distance learning and all the work your team has done.
Great, thank you, Board. Um, Kenny Mitchell here, uh, so good to hear from all of you. We're gonna take, um, a sizable amount of time, not too much, to give you an update. I wanna reinforce something that Dr. Volkmer stated. That tonight is a, is a update, uh, to date. We have a lot of great work going. We're very excited. Our team is really engaged. We're probably up to about a hundred people working on this project. They've been working all through spring break and weekends, as well as cabinet. Uh, we've been meeting every day. Dr. Volkmer was really good to us this past weekend and he gave us the weekend off. After having worked the past two weekends. And so we were able to catch our breath a little bit this weekend, but we're so excited about, um, this opportunity to transition to a digital environment. We believe that when kids do come back, there will be key pieces that we'll be able to keep and continue, um, to strengthen and, and, um, give our kids more learning opportunities outside of school. So we're happy, um, to take this, to take this challenge on. And it is a challenge, Board. I wanna share with you that it's not just nuts and bolts and moving things around. It truly is a cultural shift. It truly is a paradigm shift in how we approach educational, education and teaching and learning. And so I'll just lay out a few slides, walk you through. Happy to, gonna try to answer as many questions as buzzing around in your minds as possible about what is distance learning and what is it not, and exactly what we are doing about it. And so our goal quite, is very simple. To develop and utilize the Google Classroom digital platform to deliver a high-quality, standards-based, differentiated instructional program for all students. Our intention is to provide a world-class, high-quality, standards-based instructional program that is accessible to all of our diverse learners. By high quality, we mean that the training that we are planning for our teachers next week, as well as our leaders and certificated support staff, will focus on research-based, best-in-class strategies to ensure meaningful engagement of our students on rigorous, standards-based, common core content. Um, and, and as, as, uh, as, um, Danny, Danny described earlier, it will be a challenge because even when a kid has device and internet, home environments, um, are gonna be challenging for some of our kids, which they are now even when they're coming to school, but more so given the shift that we're making. And so that'll be our thinking as well. And so as we talk about differentiated instruction, I'll turn over to Dr. Naris to share some insight on that.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. So when we think about differentiation of instruction, we're really talking about how the accommodations in lesson design and delivery will be offered to our diverse learners in a digital format. So first of all, the accommodations for access are being planned from the very beginning rather than in addition afterwards. And that is very exciting because that means students who learning may be a challenge for them, students who language acquisition is part of their learning process, they're being considered from the very beginning by, um, in the development of our resources that then we will be training our teachers on. So that is very powerful and it'll help to improve our, our district and our systems overall. So we think about differentiation for English learners. For example, the goal is to provide resources for teachers so that they can design lessons that accommodate for language acquisition needs as well as lessons provided in the primary language. These actions include, but are not limited to, looking at our scope and sequence and curricular guides and making sure that there are corresponding English language development standards aligned for each content area, providing high-leverage English learner strategies such as GLAD, Kagan and other strategies into those, um, curricular guides for our teachers, because remember they are planning guides to help the teachers develop and design lessons for students. And then providing digital resources linked to programs and websites that support language acquisition. So imagine that these curricular guides, the scope and sequence now will have a, um, a depth of accommodation for students who, uh, are learning the English language while they're acquiring standards. Ms. Applegate continues to monitor and receive guidance in the, in the area of language development and English learner programs. And so she is instrumental in the development of differentiation. When we think about differentiation for special needs students, it's similar to the English learner, except for the goal is to provide planning resources for teachers so they can design lessons that accommodate for various processing needs for students with diverse needs. These actions also include plugging in existing resources that we actually had in our special ed department. Now we're offering that to a greater, to all of our teachers. We will be part of a scope and sequence. Well, for example, we have an educational partner, they're, they're called Don Johnson. Don Johnson provides an overlay through the Google Classroom where text can be read to students if that's what they need. It also will allow students to, um, verbally read a, or to verbally write something and then it'll put it into, um, a written format. So that's a great accommodation for students who, different ways to demonstrate their brilliance. Um, additionally, we have a resource with Goalbooks, that's a web-based resource. We had already trained all our RSP teachers on how to off, um, design lessons with universal design learning in, in mind, which is just a fancy way of saying differentiation and making sure that you have different ways for students to access the standards and the content. And that's also being plugged into these, this scope and sequence. So we are creating a, a tool for teachers so that they can plan to meet the diverse needs of their learners, whether it's language acquisition or learning, um, learning delays or learning processing in different ways. And they will be able to then offer that through the digital platform.
Thank you, Dr. Naris. Next slide, please. So I wanna talk a little bit about what is Google Classroom. So Board, we have decided to use Google Classroom as our pre-K through twelve platform to de- to deliver distance learning. We made that decision. There are several platforms out there. I wanna tell you a little bit of the rationale about why we decided. Number one, a, a large, a large, a number of teachers in our district have been using, uh, Google Classroom for the last several years. And so the transition would be easy, would be easier. Number two, because, uh, since our ransomware attack, another kind of virus, um, uh, we went, we transitioned from Microsoft Office to Google Suite. And so therefore, um, using Google Classroom, whi- which is just another application within the Google Suite was just an easy transition, even like, uh, setting this call up. All of our addresses and all of our emails are already in the same symbols. And so it becomes a seamless transition. So what is Google Classroom? Google Classroom is a collaboration application for teachers and learners. Its purpose is to facilitate paperless communication between teachers and students. Google Classroom allows teachers to create online classes, deliver lessons, create and assign work, as well as provide student feedback on that work. And then engage students in real time over a digital network. Next slide, David. Thank you. I wanna be very clear, um, about our timeline here. And so, uh, from three twenty-three to four three, which is our current spring break, we developed five workgroups to develop the key systems necessary to implement Google Classroom. So all of spring break, our staff, uh, has been engaged in developing each of the key systems to have us, uh, ready to go for Google Classroom. So what's gonna happen next week? So our, our, our initial intention to provide, uh, work packets, uh, certainly that's not the end goal. That was to give us two weeks buffer time to, uh, to pull all these systems together. As you remember, this is our seventh day working on this and changing the whole district into a digital learning environment. The huge lift required a hundred, a lot of hours of work and meeting and research and, and then listening to the state, listen to the feds in terms of guidance and so on and so forth. So what we're gonna do over the next two weeks, beginning Monday the sixth, is number one, we have a system to where we are either mailing out, uh, packets for kids for, for ten days to keep them, uh, engaged in meaningful learning activities. Um, and some schools have done, digital, have already done fully digital, uh, are one-to-one, uh, schools. Um, participating in our pilot, um, are using the majority of, uh, digital access, but then have done a good job of finding out which of their students at their particular school did not have, uh, digital access and have provided packets for those kids. During that time concurrently, we plan on launching a, an audacious goal of training all twenty-seven hundred of our teachers, as well as our support staff counselors and, and administrators on Google Classroom. Both the interface as well as, uh, scope and sequence, meaning what they'll teach and how they'll teach it through the curriculum guides. We have a hu- we have a schedule that begins Monday and goes through ten days straight. Uh, and we're using every minute of the day to train all of our teachers and we'll get into that a little bit more later. At the same time, we will, in the same two weeks, we'll be distributing devices to students that need them. Uh, we've created, uh, we've created student emails which are required to, uh, access Google Classroom for every student in the district. And we are going to be passing out internet, uh, devices, KJ and other pieces. And so, um, that team is working on that. Um, and so, and then lastly, we're providing resources and supports to parents to help them transition to this digital platform as well. I mean, it's just representing a huge cultural shift. None of us, uh, our board, our staff included, or our parents, have gone to school like this. So it would be formed for all of us. And, uh, we're, we're working a lot to try to troubleshoot as many problems as we can. We won't get it right out the gate. Uh, it'll be constant, uh, troubleshooting. And our plan is to go live district-wide, pre-K to twelve with Google Classrooms on four twenty. Aptly na- uh, aptly dated. So four twenty. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I want to, uh, share, uh, what our current work is right now. How are we developing these systems? And so when we, um, and we had our initial conversations and we just brainstormed to figure out what do we, what needs to happen to make this happen. And we developed five groups to, to meet our most immediate needs. Uh, five workgroups have been created to provide analysis. What's out there? What's available? Uh, what's, what's the research say? As well as guidance on key systems in support of our shift to the district-wide use of Google Classrooms. The workgroups, uh, are comprised of district, union and school leaders. And so on every team, uh, we have Ashley and her team involved as well as SBTA reps on every team. Our, our, we have a dozens and dozens of expert teachers that were self-selected or recommended to be part of these teams so that we're getting the best thinkers in our district. to be part of these teams so that we're getting the best thinkers in our district on this issue. As well as our certificated and classified support staff, so our program specialists, our analysts across all, representing all divisions in the district. The workgroups we have, I put seventy-five here, but it's closer to about a hundred people dispersed through these five groups. And I want to take a few minutes on each group because it's going to answer a lot of your questions if I could. So the first group is professional learning and training for Google Classrooms. This, this group is responsible for providing or identifying the professional learning needs for teachers to effectively use Google Classroom platform. We will provide masked opportunities for participating in these trainings between April sixth and April seventeenth, as we discussed before. There will be both self-guided and instructor-led distance courses. Our Google Classroom training has been developed by our, our team in a cross, cross divisional format. The courses will be, will offer both live facilitated webinars and self-paced options. All teachers and administrators will be required to complete the course offerings. All sessions will be delivered by our district program specialists and coaches as well as our demo classroom teachers. Our demo classroom teachers will be hosting office hours daily during both weeks. Teachers and counselors can sign up for these sessions to receive coaching and participate in group problem solving. Thoughtful collaboration with our student wellness and our students' support services and special ed teams have yielded the addition of, of resources and tools specific to the roles of counselors and special education teachers. And so we've designed a professional development and training tool that teachers and support staff will go through over the next two weeks. They will certify their expertise in Google Classrooms. We will require that all of our teachers go through it and we will require that all of our administrators go through it as well. The second group, the second workgroup is scope and sequence, curriculum guidance, differentiation, and teacher responsibility. This workgroup is responsible for providing guidance to teachers to ensure that online learning opportunities are high quality and aligned to the Common Core standards for rigor. That's really important. We are, we are still pushing our instructional program. We still expect grade level teaching and we still let, expect grade teaching that is aligned to the Common Core. And so what this team is doing is coming together and taking a look at our existing curriculum guides and scope and sequences. Though, these are resources that we created for teachers to tell them, you know, what are the power standards? What should they be teaching? What should they be focusing on? And we, and we, we reviewed them to see how we can augment and supplement them in digital format. These instructional guides have been aligned with embedded digital resources and differentiated opportunities for English learners, special education students, and other targeted populations. Teachers can use a combination of what is called synchronous learning or a learning environment where students are, students and teachers are engaging at the same time or asynchronous learning in which teachers would post material and kids can you, can engage that material at any time of the day, middle of the night, weekends, what have you. So we're recommending both a synchronous environment as well as an asynchronous environment. So just like many of our staff are getting degrees online and doctorates online, our kids will have the ability and an opportunity to do the same thing. Or will not get doctorates online. But, but we'll get there. So number three, grading, assessment, student feedback, and parent engagement. This workgroup will outline recommendations for teacher grading. How do teachers assign grades? We've been doing a lot of work with Dr. Reeves. He's chiming in on this topic as well, helping us develop this as well. What kind of formative assessments will we require across grade levels that we, we were anyway? As well as how do you effectively provide students feedback, both synchronous or live or asynchronous, which is not live? Just like at our college level where we're on Blackboard and, and these other things, very similar kinds of activities. Here's, here's important about grading, and this is taken from our state guidance. Students will be held harmless. They will not receive a lesser grade than their current grade as a result of engaging in distance learning. That, that means that when they engage, their, their grades can only improve. And we will not, we will hold them harmless. And this is guidance from the, our state superintendent as well as what many districts across the nation are doing. So that way, we can try this out in a whole harmless environment, but also be having a very enriching environment and, and kid, an opportunity for kids to grow and learn. Again, this aligns with the state superintendent of public instructions, recent statements that assessments should not be used during this time as a summative measure, but rather as formative measures to gauge instruction in terms of where students need more support. And then number four, this is what Mr. Tillman was discussing. This workgroup co-led by information technology and accountability and educational tech, technology will determine the district-wide logistics to ensure that teachers and students have devices. And we're also saying teachers and students because we need to make sure, of course, that teachers have the, the, an appropriate device, just as we had to do with you all for the board meeting to make sure that we can communicate digitally. As well as, as well as an after-hours troubleshooting. So we want parents and students to be able to call someone in the middle of the night or late hour, after hours on the weekend and say, hey, how do I do this? Or he'll help me walk me through this. And so we're creating that dynamic as well. This group will have provided a plan by Friday, this coming Friday, to ensure that every student has their own device. So if there are three kids in the house, there'll be three devices. And as well as each, each household having internet. And, and, and we, we don't plan on shortage, Mr. Tillman, to address your question. Because we will, we will farm devices out from our schools. So now we have thousands of devices sitting in schools that will not be used. And so where there are gaps in terms of devices, we will allow principals to hand out devices from their classrooms. And so we, we're confident that we have enough devices to go around in addition to the, to the one-to-one, to the devices that we plant, that we passed out over the last five years.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, thank you. And so then the only hurdle that we're working through right now is just the internet devices. We have seventeen thousand, you know, to your credit and the board's credit that we've invested in Google Chromebooks for the last five years through LCAP. And so we have a lot of devices out there. We have a lot of internet devices out there. And so now Mike, Mike two, under Janie's leadership, is working with Barbara Richardson to figure out how to meet that need in terms of all of the offers that are being had out, that are being offered out there by our internet providers and phone providers. And so we're confident we're going to meet that need. And so we will not, we will, we will ensure that every, every kid in our district has their own device and their household has internet. And then lastly, we identified high school seniors as a, as a vulnerable group right now. Our high school senior concerns group will provide recommendations on high school end-of-year activities for seniors, transcripts, transition to post-secondary, scholarship, AP tests, credit recovery, in, you know, prom, graduation. We are putting out a letter this Friday that will go to all parents of seniors to answer all these critical questions. And at the end of the presentation, I have a recommendation around end-of-year activities. And so we're, we're excited about this opportunity. It's complex. It's a heavy lift. And we are asking the board's patience and, and confidence that our teams are working really hard. And it's not just about providing internet. It's changing the whole way that we teach and learn. And so it will be a learning opportunity and it will be ongoing. We're not going to just start April twenty and then forget about it. This is going to be something they're going to be working on even after kids come back. This is a very worthy place to go to be able to offer a fully digital curriculum. Because now that increases our ability to have dual enrollment. Because now all your colleges are, are, are online. So now we're, we're, we're creating an opportunity to, to make it easier to be dual, dual enrollment for colleges, credit recovery, enrichment. We often talk about what do we do for kids that are just exceeding standards and needing more challenge? Now we have opportunities to do digital content across all kinds of areas, guys. And so even digital content to make sure more kids are participating in speech and debate, honesty of the mind. I mean, there's so many ways to go on this. And so we're just super excited about this opportunity. David, next slide, please. Oh, that, that concludes my part and I want to turn it back over to Dr. Woburn. Thank you. Happy to take questions.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and take some questions now. So I will begin, I think it's Ms. Medina and then Mr. Tillman and Dr. Flores.
Okay, so my question is, because you were looking at, first of all, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for the presentation. I'm really excited of how prepared the, the team has been working. So thank you so much for that. I do want to ask with regards to, since this is all new, I know there's teachers that have done this type of work, but using this is, is all new. Have you connected with outside schools that have been doing this? And the reason why I'm asking is because I know that there has, like for instance, Excelsior Charter School. Right after we closed down our schools, they were already onboard, having their teachers, you know, bidding reporting their teachers on the computer with their students. So I'm wondering, have you connected with other school sites? And, and that could be even with charter schools who have been doing this for a long time now. Of what, you know, what are the best practices and, and trying to get their feedback, feedback on what's working? Because for them, it, they have not impacted their instruction whatsoever.
Thank, thank you for the question, Ms. Medina. Yes, the first task of all five groups was to do a research and analysis of the field for best practices, best, best in class. So all, each, each group asked questions and looked at our, we're looking at our peers. We're looking at charters. We're looking at national efforts. So they spent a significant amount of time just gathering what's out there, what's available to us. What does the research say? What does the field say? And so all of that, all of that was brought into the thinking. And so I want to assure you that this Friday, we will have a recommendation from all five groups. Will cabinet will vet that. We'll start training teachers starting Monday morning. We already have a schedule for that. And so to answer your question, the best thinking that's out there has been fully engaged in, in, into our thinking. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, thank you. So first, I know there's parents out there and, you know, I have a nephew that lives with me and he's a senior. So my question as a parent, what grades are going to be used to ensure that my nephew is going to graduate? He was on track to graduate. He was a senior. So what is the state decided is going to be the basis of how many units you have to complete? Is it going to be where it left off when we shut down school or exactly what's going to take place?
Yes, and so the team has established a date. And I believe it was early, I think it was like March thirteenth, where, where we take a picture of the, the current, the kids' grades that day.
Okay.
Now the distance learning will only add to that, not, not detract from that grade. So when we say grades will be, will, students will be held harmless during this experimental time that what they, they engage themselves, our kids could walk away with greatly improved grades.
Exactly.
But that we, we established a date to say, as of this date, those, these are the current grades.
Perfect. And then on, on another flip side, I had a parent that, from what Abigail talked about in terms of some of the charter schools having some expertise in distant learning. We also have the other side of, I had a parent who has a child at ASA and she called and said, what are you going to do about distant learning in the future? And they said, we haven't thought about it. So that parent is concerned. So two questions, are there any plans on partnering with the district charter schools to provide us some of this expertise? Some people lose sight of the building we have because we're a district decide to have somebody like Dr. Mitchell and all his staff and their expertise that can bring something this big together in this shorter period of time. So I congratulate you for doing it, but there, the small, the small schools can't do this. So have you thought, have you thought about involving them? Because in the end, those are all our kids and we all know that those students come back to our schools. Some of our schools, students go to their schools. So I think it's, it's important for us not to lose sight of, we're all in this together. And if there's some way you can provide training for those others, teachers and, and and, and for the schools that don't go along, the question I had, let's say the worst case scenario, there's a, we have a charter school in our district and they said, we're not doing anything. We're done for the year. And like the parent today, well, is there a way that parent can enroll their kid in our district to make sure they, they can take advantage of this? And the, and my only theory is I know a lot of our staff is gone. Do, do we have the apparatus to enroll kids still?
I, I will turn that over to Dr. Perez.
Yes, Mr. Tillman, we actually have been working on that, which will come in another recommendation probably at our, our next, another board meeting in April to deploy online enrollment. But in the meantime, we do have staff taking students' information and enrolling. We will then assign them to schools and work with those schools to share that there is a new student enrolled and we will provide something for them during that gap. Until they actually get assigned to, you know, if they're a high school student, until they get assigned to their appropriate teachers and whatnot. But we will be meeting that need in the meantime.
Perfect. Before you, before you move on, Danny, just to answer your charter school question. Yes, we will reach out to charters. Thank you for the recommendation to ensure that they're able to keep pace. Well, what we're doing, because we, you, you're absolutely correct, right, that we, they are serving our students. We also are looking that, once we get this up and running, and we have never really taken the time to dig in deep like we are now, that we think that we'll, we offer a more attractive environment for distance learning going forward. And so we think that it's going to be highly competitive with any future charters or folks. Basically, folks have been able to outdo us on the distance learning because we haven't had the impetus to really go after like we're doing now. But once this puppy's up and running, it's going to be pretty hard to compete with us.
You know, I, I, today I read some articles about school distance up and down the state. Some of them have never given devices out at all. So I just, it's just sad to see them starting from scratch. We have a huge benefit because we've been doing it for so long. We take it for granted, but that, that's a big deal. And then last, I want to say, I know there's parents out there who know they have kids that are seniors. But you guys are going to talk about these activities. But I want to say, if, if school is out until June, whenever we get to all clear, if we have any time at all to do something for those seniors, we're going to invest in, only have, I don't know what it's going to be grad night or a prom or a party or something. There has to be something that is big for them if we can do it in time before they leave and go away. That's to be our goal. Thank you.
Yeah, we agree. Thank you so much, Danny.
Thank you so much. Then it's going to be Mr. Gallo and then Dr. Hill.
What about me?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores. Dr. Flores and then Mr. Gallo and then Dr. Hill.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and thank your whole team. It's quite an endeavor and like you said, it's a, a big lift to do. And I wonder if David Chavez could go back to the last, yeah, there you go. Because my questions pertain around there for the professional, my first question is for the professional learning training for the Google Classroom. So my question is, do we have teacher union support to, you know, for protocols? For, not just protocols, but in terms of their willingness to enter into these types? This is a whole different thing that we're asking them to do and to learn on the, on the job. And so I'm, I'm, that's my question. Do we have teacher union support on this?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, Ashley is participating, I believe, in group number three. And we, and, and we have her SPTA reps across all five groups. And then as, as Mr. Hallison said earlier, we are sitting down with the union to scope out a side letter to get into the particulars of this. But we've had great support from our teachers that are participating in helping us. We, we, we launched the groups and we said that cabinet will withhold decisions and allow these groups to work and provide us with a recommendation to move forward. So we, we all had to resist the urge significantly to say, hey, do this, do this, do this. And we said, no, we will stop all decision-making until we hear from each of these groups and allow them to take the time to research, to analyze, to talk with peers, to look at this, look at websites, to do all kinds of research and provide for us a solution that will work for our district. And we, and we believe that, and I, and I told them when we And we believe that, and I told them when we launched, that the direction that they provide for us, wanted to make sure it had their fingerprints on it, their heart and soul on it.
So they've seen all these plans already? Everybody has?
Yeah, I meet with each of the team leaders every day, and I'm seeing these things being built real time. And I gave them until Friday, and sometimes the cabinet will join some of their meetings. We're all tied in.
It's the teachers' union, the teacher union folks, the leadership folks? Are they also getting privy to, you know, I know these are developing and ongoing. Are they getting updated on a daily basis or regularly?
Each of the teams have been meeting every day. Our SPTA reps are on those meetings, so they're in the conversations. They're developing the forums, they're developing their recommendations. So the recommendation that's coming to cabinet, they wrote.
They, when you say they, who is that?
Okay, so let's take group number one.
Let's take group two.
Let's take group number two. That's being led by Anna Applegate. And she has a team of four or five people that forms a leadership team. One of those folks are SPTA reps. And then her team that she works with is, will have maybe thirty more people on it that will be comprised of teachers and program specialists. Remember, program specialists are teachers as well. So they work, they have been working, meeting every day to answer their questions and get through their tasks. I meet with the leaders of each of those groups every night to debrief and problem-solve and hear their direction and give guidance, as well as other members of cabinet. So we have Lorraine involved and Rachel involved in terms of guiding the people that are leading. So for example, like Dr. Lundey representing special ed, and her whole team are embedded in all of these groups. And then Lorraine's folks, in terms of counselors and mental health, are embedded in all of these groups as well. And so to get back to what, I want to assure the board that this will have teacher fingerprints all on it.
Okay, so is Ashley, is Ashley, the president of SPTA, updated on each one of these groups? Has she had?
She's participating in group three.
And since she's the president, has she been informed of the progress of each of these groups?
Yes. So I facilitated a meeting last week, and I facilitated a meeting on Thursday. Where all five groups, with all a hundred and some people on the line, hear a report from each of the five groups. And so we do it once a week, our next meeting is Thursday. So yes. And then, and then Rachel, Lorraine, and I still have our standing meetings with Ashley as well.
Yeah, so my next question, I have about three other questions, is, so, okay, so we have the scope and sequence, we have the professional learning, we have all of these, and I'm talking about the first three. Are we going to, you have student feedback, parent engagement, what about teacher feedback? Are we going to include where teachers can review and also provide revisions or upgrades to any of these three teaching, learning groups?
Yeah, these groups aren't going away, Dr. Flores, and so they'll continue. So one of the things that's happening.
Teachers will have opportunity for input and so forth? Okay, great.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. My next question is, so, you know, just learning to use the Chromebook and to use, I mean, it's what the board had to do to learn. I'm wondering, you know, Google Classroom is probably a new tool for a lot of people. So I know you said you're going to launch the professional development of Google Classrooms. And what if our, and I'm assuming that this professional development will be ongoing, because I don't think the majority of our teachers have that capability right now in terms of, I mean, I'm sure some of the high school teachers and maybe some of the middle school teachers, but I don't know about our elementary teachers across the board. So I'm just positing it as a rhetorical question, you know, in terms of their capability. I hope that we provide the support and the time, you know, I know you're going to give them two weeks, but it's a big lift in terms of, you know, as you're going along. So that's just my concern in terms of, you know, the teachers doing that. My other concerns deal with access and equity of devices and the internet, and you've addressed that. But I'm still wondering, what about, you know, what if that option, digital platform option is not available to every single student in our district? You know, what is the packet, another option that they have? Because there will be situations where, you know, they won't be able to have a device. And so I hope that we keep track of that. And, you know, and that, I don't know if you all read that article in the LA Times about how many kids didn't have devices? I think it was the LA Times, like, three days, three or four days or last week, where fifteen thousand kids didn't have access to devices. So I'm just really concerned about that. I'm concerned about our seniors. I know it's going to be tough for them, and we just have to support them a lot. I think they're going to be depressed, because they are not going to be able to, you know, go through the graduation rituals and all the different, you know, excitement for getting through this year, I mean, when you're finally finished. So those are just questions I have. And then, Madam President, I would like to agendize Superintendent Thurman's letter for our next meeting.
We are going to talk about that. That's part of, you know, we talked about those comments. I think you mentioned that to me. I got the word earlier today, Dr. Volkermer is aware of it. We just wanted to get through this portion. So next actual board meeting, we plan on agendizing that and making a decision about, you know, whether we're going to end the school year, which is kind of obvious in a lot of the things that we're looking at. But this distance learning has to go along with whatever we decide to do. So I appreciate that. I hear you, and we'll be talking about that in the upcoming meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and all your team. Did an awesome job.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Mr. Gallo and then Dr. Hill?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. My question kind of centers around the quality of instruction that we're going to be providing. And the, I guess, how do we track to make sure students are actually performing the work and, you know, meeting these kind of basically independent study type arrangements? I think we can, you know, I'm not sure if Google Classroom is intending to actually have live classes like we do as we're present in school, and the material would be presented there, or if they'll be, you know, just doing stuff on their own, which, as you know, some students are probably pretty good self-starters, and some are probably maybe not so disciplined in being able to complete the work. And are we going to try to mimic the classroom environment as much as we can? How do you plan on implementing the Google Classroom piece?
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. As I said earlier, we're going to do a hybrid. So what's called synchronous instruction is live teaching. And then asynchronous instruction is where kids can do assignments on their own time. So we're going to use a hybrid of both. And there are ways to, there are ways to attract attendance, and there are ways to ensure that kids are engaged and so on and so forth. So we're going to do a hybrid. So there'll be online times, and we're working through those details with our teachers and during negotiation. There'll be times where the teacher is doing just like what we're doing right now. This is what we would call a synchronous instruction. I'm talking, you're talking, it's happening live, I'm seeing pictures of you. And we're able to wave at each other and so on and so forth, as well as engage. Look at what we're doing right now. We have a PowerPoint up. I got notes displayed on one half of my screen. I'm talking to you all. We have a chat going. All those kinds of things is what the classroom environment will look like. There'll be an opportunity for teachers to post assignments and activities for kids to do, just like they would do a homework assignment at home. So we're working out all those details. The group, group number two is tasked with determining what the instructional day looks like. And we have several samples and models that we're looking at from research articles to what actual districts have already gone down this route before us. We have those samples as well. And I'm confident that we're going to arrive to a model that works well for our kids and our community.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to figure out how we actually get students on a regular time basis participating more on the synchronous, and then say the independent study. What I just think, you know, I think about credit acquisition, you know, how our student's going to be, you know, getting appropriate credits, et cetera. I get it for the rest of this year, but, you know, this may lead into other distance learning type opportunities, you know, for the foreseeable future. And, you know, I can see this transitioning public education to some extent and in classroom, you know, packing classrooms with students, et cetera. And so this is a great time to try it out, and I'd just like to see that we're getting some metrics out of it.
Absolutely.
Students, what they're performing, is there a testing protocol? Is there, you know, some assessments, like you're able to do in classrooms? The teachers are able to assess understanding as part of their lesson plan and kind of test that through the, you know, through the interactive process. So that's great. I know you got a lot of stuff to think about, Keenan. You know, great, great work on this. Really, this is, this is brand-new stuff. And I think you're showcasing how your team can actually respond pretty quickly. You had a great implementation plan put in place where you're doing packets for students over the next couple of weeks, you know, and come back April 6th through the 20th, and then roll this out on April 20th. So it's a good plan, good schedule. And anything the board can do to support, I'm sure will all be there.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. Dr. Hill? Are you unmuted?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Keenan and to your work groups, I just, I can't commend you enough. I don't know how many of you remember when Larry Holmes defeated Muhammad Ali. But this is what has happened with coronavirus. Nobody saw it coming. And I know Muhammad Lee didn't see it coming from Larry Holmes. And I think to be able to bounce back and do as much as we've done so far with the entire cabinet and with the support of the board, it has been absolutely wonderful. I'm looking at, I'm looking at what you are proposing, and I'm looking at it as a glass being half-full or more than half-full than half-empty, because you're well on your way, I think is wonderful. I think the students, the parents, our entire staff, especially the teachers, are going to really appreciate moving in this new direction. My concern is with those teachers who are not quite there yet. And I just don't want them to get stressed out, thinking, what am I going to do? And hope there's a plan in there for some online training for them, where they may not be in a group session, or just some kind of way, someone would just need to give them, put them in the comfort zone of it's going to be okay, and we're here to help you. And we don't expect you to know all of the high-tech in the Google Classroom if you haven't used it before. So I know they can do it, and I know they will do it, because they care for our kids. But I just want to say, I think it's wonderful. I like the direction you're moving in, and I'm more than happy. And I'm sure my other six board members can be very supportive of doing whatever we can to make this, you know, a very successful year, even for our seniors. And I just want to say to our seniors, hang in there, hang in there, and give us an opportunity to see what we can do for you. But thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I want to share that our delivery model is mass, individual, self-paced coaching. We will actually host trainings where teachers will be, will have a live person to walk them through, teach them a part, watch them do it, teach another part, watch them do it, and so on and so forth. So we will, we have developed a schedule that will fit most of our teachers' needs. And so we're confident that we'll get teachers there. We also have a lot of models in our district, Dr. Hill. There are dozens and dozens of teachers already doing this stuff and have been hosting their whole class on Google Classroom for a couple of years now. And so we have some good models, our demo teachers are involved. And so the individual coaching and the individual, the smaller group sessions, as well as the hosted coaching, where teachers will be walked through a part and then have them demonstrate their ability to do it and then go to another part. And so thank you for sharing, thank you for sharing your feedback regarding. You always have the heart of our district in mind, and we are appreciative that you continue to push us on that. So thank you.
Well, all of you are doing a marvelous job. And to those at the sites who are working and see our kids day in and day out, we really appreciate you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, thank you. Can we make sure that we announce to the parents that they can also receive the internet, do a hotspot, and maybe make it a little easier for them to request it? I know we have the ability, and I know we have the link out there for the internet, but I just want to make sure that they know they have that. And then last.
We can do that, Danny.
Okay. And then I know we have a hotline for that students can report crime and abuse to when they're at school. And maybe we can ensure we make that public for the students in case something extreme is going on at their home, that they can still use those same tools to report instances of abuse.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. We'll drive. I know that Linda's on the phone as well as, on the line as well as chief. And so we're taking notes of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallo, you had a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. I was specifically referencing, or I had a question around the packets and the work that's going to be starting, what, next Monday? As it relates to, you know, we're going to be, I guess, is what I thought I heard somebody say, mailing packets home to students from the various teachers. And there's some instructions provided, standard instructions, I would imagine, and then methodologies on how those packets are going to be returned. I wonder if you might be able to just summarize for us that process? So not only we understand, but, you know, families understand when they get the packets. Here's what you're going to get, here's the expectation, and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, happy to do so. So Danny, Mr. Gallo, so when we first got started, as you remember, we didn't know, we hadn't even decided to close our district yet. And so, in fact, we had just made the decision to close our district. And so we were anticipating that we probably would not return after spring break. And so we hadn't even thought really deeply about distance learning, because we thought we would probably be out no more than two weeks. So our initial ask of principals of their teachers was to provide some meaningful activities for kids to stay engaged at home for two weeks. Then once we found out that we would be transitioning to distance learning, because we would be out longer, though, we, now, it was really fortuitous, because it gave us a two-week buffer to continue to pull our system together and train teachers to train. To continue to pull our system together and train teachers to transition to distance learning. And so um. I shared a conversation that we had with our high school principal. Our high school principals um, led efforts. With their teachers and their teachers created very high-quality uh, packets. And needed more time to pull those together. We granted that time this week to get back into their buildings. Because those principals had the lead efforts where they collated six, seven periods of work per kid. By their schedule and getting it mailed to them. So some of our schools are mailing them. Some of them are doing a grab and go on Monday. So um, um, but our, but our intention was to have kids engaged while we figure this out. And uh, and uh, again, those, those assignments again will be held harmless, but would be for enrichment and to keep the students engaged and so. And also too, a few of our schools have also created digital opportunities for our kids along with the packets as well. So that's the purpose of those. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Dr. Flores also had a follow-up question?
Uh, yes. Um, I just wanted to, I know you mentioned that um, our EL kids were also being. Uh, targeted uh, and uh, we have twelve thousand of them and another about twelve thousand that are reclassified. So I hope that the lessons are also tailored to them. And uh, I don't remember how many LTALs we have in high school and middle, or in high school. I hope that, you know, we can um, that, that they're also being considered. Uh, are they being considered in the scope and sequence curriculum?
Absolutely. I shared that earlier. If you remember, Dr. Menares talked deeply about that at the very beginning, so.
It's across the board then, right?
Absolutely, across the board. Special education and EL are represented across the board.
Okay. And then I also am concerned about our foster kids and our homeless kids. Um. And I know we have a great team. Um, uh, and I'm, I'm sure they're on those. Uh, I'm sure they're represented on all of the three, right? The three. Okay, good. Okay. So that was my only comment and I'm, I'm glad that you guys are addressing those needs. And uh, you said that Anna Applegate was in charge of scope and sequence?
Uh, yes, uh, she's on group two, yes.
Okay, that's great. Who leads group one? Professional learning?
Bar- Barbara Richardson and Mike Two. Oh, excuse me, Barbara Richardson. Uh, scope and sequence, uh, we, we have headed up by uh, Anna. Tasha Dweisen is over three, uh, Barbara and Mike Two are over four and uh, Dr. Venkatesan is over five.
So who's over uh, number one?
Uh, Barbara Richardson.
Oh, she's over two of them?
Yes. And, and yes, absolutely, because she's our expert on uh, educational technology.
Okay, all right. Okay, sounds great. And I just wanted to make a comment. I know we have college interns. And I know they're, they're techies and very tech, techie savvy. And I know they help teachers and students in classrooms. Perhaps we could retool them or they could help in um. You know, helping teachers or kids who don't know how to use the devices, um, you know, as troubleshooters. So I'm just throwing that in there uh, in terms of. College interns. Thank you, Adam, uh, Madam, I just wanna call you Madam Secretary, Madam President.
Okay, Dr. Mitchell, let me, I was double checking to see if there was no other questions. Um, my question just to add in is. What will attendance look like? I, and this is coming from, I did see an article where they showed. Where everybody didn't get logged in or signed in or something. They were kind of missing in action. Do we, have you already looked at the protocols of how that will align and look to ensure that they're coming on? Cause you know, college is a little bit different. You have a span. Here they need to be engaging ongoing.
Absolutely. So the, the system accounts for student attendance, but in terms of how attendance is officially being kept, uh, let Dr. Perez uh, address that.
Yes, thank you. Um, so attendance right now, what we're being told and more info is coming because. At the state level, you can imagine they're trying to figure these things out. Um, will be in a holding pattern. Um, dating back to our last day of um, actual attendance and then we'll be, continue to work with our state. Around where we go next. And it is evolving because you were all making reference to. The fact that our state superintendent was now making reference to us being out longer. So I, we expect more. Guidance to come from the state with relationship to attendance.
And it's, and, and more specifically is not so much the, the money, the financial part of it. Is just that ensuring that the students are checking in and we have all of, you know, the proper information. Because even though it goes out, you know, we know even with the cards that we used to have in the past, they don't get updated. So. Hopefully, we're looking at, there'll be some information that we have is just not accurate and if we're mailing. Will there be times where they come and pick up? And I know we don't wanna create um, gathering again, but. You know, how will you get that to them?
Y- y- yeah, we're, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to uh, uh, use social distancing as much as possible. Uh, students will be allowed to send and communicate with your teachers. As I said, all students will have an email address as of next week. And uh, you'll be able to attach assignments, upload assignments, take pi- take pictures with your cell phone, all kinds of methods uh, to get work. We're trying to keep kids and teachers off campus.
Right. But in that engagement via the electronics. Knowing that there, is it gonna be, they need to log in every day? Are we, we're monitoring it like that? That, that's the big piece I'm talking about. That once and getting the, uh, getting the Chromebooks, everything to them. Based on there are gonna be some address challenges, I can only imagine.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we're anticipating that as well. Uh, with our first test. Will be mailing packets to see what we get back. And we'll do home visits, we'll do what, we'll do what is necessary. To ensure that a kid has what they need to be successful in this new environment. Uh, uh, Ms. Rob.
Thank you. And I believe it's Mr. Tillman? You had a follow-up question as well?
Yes, and it's more of a statement. You know, uh, I think we all gotta realize no one planned for this, right? So we, we got dealt the hand and we're dealing with the best way that we can. I, I, and, and I really think it's gonna be important to make sure there are no uh, negative consequences. For not participating in a certain way. And I say that for a, a, an important reason. Number one. It's great that Dr. Mitchell and his team are offering this curriculum. There are other districts that are doing the same thing. And I always see our students as being in a competition with those surrounding districts and districts throughout the state and the nation. So this is gonna be allow, this is gonna allow uh, some of our students to keep up with other students. It's a great opportunity. But, but I, but I'm not naive to think that all the kids are gonna be able to participate. I, I understand there are gonna be some extenuating circumstances that are gonna negatively affect. The ability for all kids to participate in this new venture. But it's great that we're offering it. Uh, I can't minimize. Uh, the effect it's gonna have for our parents to be able to um, have a structured environment. That will allow them to help continue their children's education. The sad thing is. The, the kids that are in households that are more conducive to education, they're gonna fa- far outpace the kids. Who are living with some form of chaos. We realize that. And that's the, I think we have to keep our eye on the ball. And find ways to mitigate those circumstances. I know we have a team. That works specifically with homeless and foster youth. We need to make sure those teams somehow stay active, stay online. And are interacting with those uh, parents and those students. And maybe put that on the uh, the internet. Have a, a, a link where they can contact directly our staff that's servicing uh, foster youth right now. Or homeless youth, so that we can make some special arrangements if possible. Uh, because those are gonna be the things that are gonna be important. Uh, it, it's always, I always get concerned about all our kids having so much potential. And I really believe that the action adult, the action of a, negative action of adults should not adversely affect our kids. But in the end, it always does. So I think it's our job just to bend over backwards to try to help every uh, child. And parent in our community to help their kids be successful. So with that, I wanna thank you all for the work that you're doing. And that we're gonna continue to do. And lastly, uh, Janey, I would, I would advise that if you take these. Computers out of the, the, the classroom, that we immediately uh, order new computers to replace those. And not be concerned about finding some way to get those computers back and put them back in the classroom. Allow the students to continue to use it when they come back to, to campus, but we need to do the order now. Um, so that it gives enough time to get those devices in. Right now, it's hard getting devices. I, I know because. I'm trying to get for all my staff that wanted, uh, that we want to uh, work from home now. So the sooner you put the order in, the better chance it's gonna be that we'll have it at the start of our next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Okay, I think we have concluded on the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. We know this was a huge lift. But we appreciate all the hard work from you and your staff that is put into this. It's no easy feat, uh, feat. But you guys are really just got your sleeves rolled up and you guys are in it. So we appreciate you.
Thanks so much. I'll turn it back over to, thank, thank you so much.
Okay, Dr. Volkmer, I think you have three of our, um, there's gonna be another slide.
Board, we thank you very much for all your questions, your feedback, your comments. It's, it's very helpful to us. Um, we wanna make sure uh, that you're aware of some things we're doing. You've given us a lot of feedback on our childcare. I think we have. A fairly clear direction from you. I wanted to just touch base on numbers one and three. Um, uh, in terms of what the structure of our meal program is going forward after spring break. Uh, so Janey, if you could um. Describe that and just, uh, we'll allow the board to react if they so choose.
Yes, thank you. So we will continue after spring break, regional meal distribution twice a week. That helps with the social distancing, but it provides each child with a breakfast and lunch from Monday through Friday. It will be distributed at six sites. And then our most vulnerable learners will receive the same meals via direct delivery. And that was in um, collaboration with special education, transportation and nutrition services. So that's our, our recommendation. And I, I'll, let me give you the sites really quick. The sites will be Alessandro Elementary, Riley, Pacific High School. Holcombe, Muskoye and Del Vallejo.
All right, um, Ms. Medina?
Clarify, what do you mean by twice a week? And, and you put there uh, Monday through Friday. So they, I don't understand if you can explain that.
Yeah, so what they're doing is on Monday, they will distribute a lunch and breakfast for Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they will provide the same thing. So there'll be different options, but they'll take home the meals for the rest of the week.
Also, they'll be taking meals for the rest of the week with them? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And um, are there instructions, what that would look like? Would they just refrigerate it? I mean, I'm just curious to see what I, I.
They will. There will be some that they heat up, you know, they'll be frozen that they can heat up in the microwave. So they will, food service will provide them that. With that information. The breakfast will be like cereal and um, other items like that.
And which school sites were they again?
The school sites are Alessandro, Riley, Pacific High School, Holcombe. Muskoye and Del Vallejo. I apologize, it didn't get in the presentation. And we can send those to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Dr. Flores?
Yes, why uh, don't we have a high school on the west side like a royal? There are most needy uh, kids.
So they tried to set up regions across the district and it doesn't mean that high schools can't go to, you know, they don't have to go to their home school. So um, I can ask that of the team that came up with the recommendation.
Because, so in the robocall, the high school kids on the west side will only have Alessandro to go to?
And Muskoye, yeah.
But Muskoye is an unincorporated uh, area and it's very isolated just to that area. Uh, and um. Okay, so, and there'll be meals for um. The parents and the kids will know that they can go uh, to Alessandro. They don't have to go to, to their high school, correct?
Yes, they send out robocalls. Ms. Bardaire's team does a great job and so all of that information will go out to our families.
And if it doesn't work and some parents can't uh, go to those schools, will we open up other schools, I hope?
We'll continue to monitor it um, and just provide feedback, uh, listening to what the needs are of the community of our students.
Okay, I hope so. Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Okay, uh, I think that was the last. I didn't see any other questions. So.
I did have a follow-up really quickly. And just with Barbara, uh, Dr. Flores. Is that at the school sites, it was just used as a drop zone. It doesn't necessarily have, because it's high school, it's only for high school students or elementary school. It was just for elementary students. We had many high school students um, come to the elementary school that we were passing out lunch in Riley, for example. So it was, it's just a site of where it's closest to where the community's at. And when we did this on Friday, there wasn't nothing in the. In the east side of San Bernardino. So there was, and what I mean by that, like in Highland, that's why Pacific was added. As one of the options, because there was nothing in that, in that region.
And the same thing for Holcombe area as well. So now they're covering all of those kind of regional areas. Great. Dr. Volkmer, did you have anything else? Do you have direction?
Madam President, yeah, I do. Uh, I would just like, um, I wanna make sure that you understand where we're going with senior activities. Uh, so if I could have uh, Dr. Mitchell share the, the basic uh, recommendation from that work team that's been working on it. It's number three on the screen.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Volkmer. So uh, the work group number five is unique. Uh, that's being led by Dr. Sudhvekatesan along with all of the high school principals. And the idea was that, is that we did not want our, each of our principals making uh, very local decisions for just their school. Um, to uh, so that we'd have, be all over the place. For example, one school offering prom, one school not. One school doing a graduation, one school not. So what we decided with, with, in this, this group is unique in that it involves. All of our high school programs, including continuation and comprehensive. And my direction to them was that cabinet would support. Cabinet would support their unified direction. Uh, uh, and decision on what to do. So about all these uh, various uh, issues that are confronting. Our high school seniors. And so collectively, uh, not, so it wasn't a majority decision, it's a one hundred percent. Decision, uh, unanimous decision on these. So what we'll be doing is sending out a letter to all parents of seniors. That goes through all the hopes of issues, scholarship, credits. Um, with, to, to Mr. Tillman's uh, question earlier about when will we stop, when is the last date of actual instruction? That grades will be calculated from transcript support, um, uh, uh, credit recovery. Uh, and what, one of the things that came out that we wanna make a clear announcement now is that we are canceling all senior activities. Through the end of the year, except if permissible, graduation, because graduations are the last week in June. And if something should miraculously happen, which we're doubtful of. Uh, high schools would be willing to host graduations at their individual campuses. Cause what we're finding is that even all. All the venues have been um, that, that we, we have reserved venues months ago. And most of the venues are cancelling on them. So even if, even if we came back to school, we'd have a problem with vendors. Uh, uh, venues, vendors, contractors, all that kind of stuff. So we're cancelling all, all end of year activities. Tough conversation for our team, but we, we came to a unanimous decision from our high school principals. So that way. The district sends out one letter as opposed to each principal sending out an individual letter that would cause the board. A huge uh, pushback from our community if we did something different across our high schools. And so we are, we did tell the principals that whenever this thing clears up. And, and informed parents that we would want to have a graduation ceremony when it's permissible in the summer or fall. That's not to say that kids won't get, won't graduate. Of course, kids will graduate. But a graduation ceremony, we will host. Two thousand twenty, whenever that's possible.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Um, before I get to you, Mr. Tillman. Um, I think Abigail needed a little bit, Ms. Medina needed some clarity on number two. Um, I think Abigail needed a little bit, Ms. Medina needed some clarity on number two, childcare. Um, so we want to revisit that question again.
I believe, I can wait after they finish with number three. Um, that way we can just finish that portion and then move forward with, uh, number two.
One, one, one last thing too, uh, Ms. Rogers. Um, all activity, all fees collected by students will be reimbursed, period. No problem here. And we're work, we have, uh, Eric and IMT working through that right now along with, with Janie and Fiscal. So, um, the, of course we're giving back money to parents as soon as possible.
And that was a question that was raised about fees and things they pay for the senior packets, all of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Tillman?
That was my question. He just answered it.
Okay.
They want their refunds.
Yes. Okay, um, Ms. Medina?
Okay, just for three, just to make sure that we're having that conversation, because I know there was a, a few things that we were talking about. Um, so then what, what we would be, uh, approving or pushing or, or moving forward is the recommendation of the district. But with that recommendation of the district, I do want to make sure that we emphasize if there are costs that families, um, cannot afford. And this includes with the staff too, to make sure that the staff members who are working with the school district are included to receive the childcare as well. Uh, if they're currently in our school district, working at sites that they provided that opportunity. But making sure that with the recommendation, I would suggest we make sure that if there are those that cannot afford it. Uh, for whatever reason, that we are there to support them as well.
Agreed. And so, um, Dr. Perez, I think that this was under you. So I think again, wha- what we want to make sure is that we don't run into a problem where someone is in dire need and they can't afford or they can't pay. But it sounds like you vetted many of the, the collaborative partners, but we just want to remind them that we're not trying to put our families in a financial strain without having the opportunity, because we are not providing that. So.
I completely understand that. I'm making note of that now.
Okay.
Anybody that made it to that list was because they, A, had space for our students and B, um, had that flexibility within their, um, cost structure to meet our, our community's needs.
Okay.
And where would the families be? Where would the families, um, call? Who would the families call in case they do have questions or additional input? Or, or need help? Would that be with, um, your department? I don't know if you can share it right now?
Yes. Actually, we will be pushing out information to our community. Um, and we were again, waiting for the direction from our board. Um, and then we will be sharing that information via social media. Um, Linda's team will help us tremendously with getting that out through communications. Um, and then asking many of our site leaders to use their methods for communicating with, um, their communities via social media as well. So we will be putting, um, putting many measures in place to ensure that all of our parents have access to the information and know who to call directly within the Student Services Department for that, um, help, specific help, um, should they need that.
And also including staff that are currently working in the district, if they have young children as well to include them, especially if they're working in the school district right now.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, board members.
What did that last comment mean? What, uh?
So there's, so the, we had at the last one, the last one where, uh, they presented, there was, uh,
Abigail, we can't hear you.
Dare you, Abigail.
Lean back a little. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So there, and the last, uh, one of the, one of the first presentations regarding childcare, it mentioned, it showed that there were several employees, staff members that had also, um, had their children part of the, of the childcare. And I think there was what, 17, 16 of them, um, depending on the days. And so what I'm saying is that, uh, those employees that are currently working in the school district right now, they, be it, um, nutrition services. That they're also included as it was in the beginning when, uh, we were providing childcare. Um, I don't know if they can go back to that slide, but it is in there where they had, um, provided childcare for staff that were working in the school district.
So I can address those numbers, um, Ms. Rosales Medina, uh, and, and I included those numbers so that we would have a good picture and view of what, what the actual numbers look like. So I'll go with the day that we had the highest number. Um, we had a high of 78 students and I noted that 19 of those students were children of staff. Mostly because we had staff providing childcare. So I'll give you an example. We'll take, you know, Muskoye and say that, uh, the people who were providing childcare at Muskoye, because they had to be at work, also brought their children with them. So, because they were deemed an essential worker. So there's, their own child got counted into those numbers. So on the day that we had the most students, 78, 19 of those were students of our staff.
Thank you for the clarification. And then, um, I guess what, what was mentioned also earlier with, um, making sure that those employees, since they are coming into our school district, I'm not sure how many employees they are that are coming in while many are staying home and doing the work from home. There are those essential workers that are at the, at the, at the district, um, campuses or offices. That they're provided that opportunity. Um, that was my extension of, of making sure that they're also, since they are sacrificing, they are being, um, you know, coming in, that they're provided that opportunity.
Okay, you, you got that, Dr. Perez?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, board members. Um, Dr. Volkmar, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Uh, board, before I, before I wrap it up, um, I just wanted to, um, uh, make a couple of comments about, um, State Superintendent, uh, of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman's letter. I don't know if you've all had.
Dr. Volkmar, I'm, I'm sorry, just before you go, Mr. Tillman, did, did you come on with a question there or did it get answered?
You gotta have to thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right. How about that? Go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Board, I don't know if you've had a chance to see the letter. It came out, uh, kind of mid to late afternoon and it has gone, uh, beyond viral, actually. I just, if you haven't had a chance to read it, I just wanted to clarify and we can certainly agendize it for discussion, uh, at, at, uh, April 7th, if that's the will of the board. But I just wanted to read two sentences, um, to clarify what the letter actually does and says. Uh, and this is from again, Tony Thurman, "The need for safety through social distancing warrants that we continue to keep our school campuses closed to students during this pandemic." So that would suggest that, that there's a mandate for closure, but then he goes on to say, "Due to the current safety concerns and needs for ongoing social distancing, it currently appears that our students will not be able to return to school campuses before the end of the school year." So I just wanted to clarify for the board, and again, this is getting, but talk about texts and, um, uh, phones blowing up. Um, this is not a mandate to close schools for the rest of the year. There's, there, there had, that has not been done. We are getting some feedback from, um, our state agencies and lobbyists that the state board of education and perhaps the governor may be coming out with a, with a more definitive decision, um, in the next couple of days, uh, to sometime next week. But I didn't want the board to walk away this evening thinking that someone had made the decision that schools were closed for the remainder of the year. That's certainly up to you. Uh, it falls within your authority as a board. Uh, and so I just wanted to, to make sure that you knew that.
Correct. And thank you for that, um, Dr. Volkmar. And again, we do want to, you know, agendize it so we can, again, as we've done before, be able to have, uh, you know, a hearty discussion as to what we need to do together as a board. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, in that same, um, letter, he does say, "Thurman urged all districts to implement or continue to strengthen their distance learning program." "The goal, he says, is provide consistency across schools in the state." "And provides all districts educated with clarity and the ability to plan for delivering education for the rest of this school year through a distance learning model."
Right.
So when you hear that, he's definitely given a direction of not going back to a physical school. So, and what I would like, I would, I, I, I think is important that we as united for the next meeting, because it's a whole lot better for us. Make the decision to not have school to the end of the year and not have to have a, um, other agency say that it's an emergency. And then we get a call at 10 o'clock at night saying, we're going to tell everybody something different than what the board decided. So I'd rather take the action ourselves. So I think we should.
Absolutely. And that is the, that exactly what we're going to do on April the 7th. Was that Dr. Flo, let me see, Dr. Flores? Are you there?
Yes, I was going to concur that we should agendize it, like I said earlier, uh, so that we can, um, it looks like, I read the, I read, uh, Superintendent Thurman's, um, letter a couple of times. And I think the governor is going to come out in the next few days. And just so that we, you know, decide on the side of caution, because the prognosis is not good. Uh, you know, the next two to three months, uh, is going to be, we haven't even hit our apex in California. And the social distancing is really, you know, mitigating, um, strategy. Uh, so, um, in terms of our board decision, I think we have to take all of that into, into, uh, account. So I, I'm glad that we're going to agendize it so we can speak about it. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Then board, I hear clear direction from you. Thank you very much. Just want to close it out. I want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in the presentation, uh, this evening. You saw what was the culmination of dozens and dozens of people and hundreds and hundreds of hours of dedicated time to get us to where we are today. We know we've got a good plan. We also know, uh, that in times of crisis, uh, things will change. Uh, we expect that there will be some glitches on Monday despite all the great planning. Uh, and we are, we want you to know that we're ready for that. We are looking at contingency plans. Uh, what happens if a packet is not delivered? What happens if someone gets disconnected from the internet? Uh, and we are fully committed to being the best at getting better, uh, and continuing, uh, that process. And then the last thing I wanted to share as we, as we close out tonight, and that is, um, I shared with our management team in terms of a bigger picture, that our mission does not change during times of crisis. The only thing that changes is our approach to reaching our mission. Um, and we have committed as a group to being better at the end of COVID-19 than we were at the beginning. Uh, check cabinet has identified a number of systems that we can use this opportunity. You know, they say never waste a good crisis. Um, we've identified a number of systems that we believe can be far better, uh, than they were when we get, um, uh, when we get done with this, things like, and you heard already, online enrollment, uh, increased dual enrollment opportunities for kids. Um, just to name a few. And so we're excited about where we're going. I want to thank the board as always for their, their guidance and support. Uh, and I just appreciate everybody that's been involved this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Volkmar. We know that you have been working around the clock. And we probably talk more than you care to, but in the interest of what we're doing for the kids and our families and community, it's well worth it. So thank you, board members. I think we survived our first virtual board meeting. So look forward to many more. I think we'll be better even at this on our next board meeting. But we will again, just to reassure everyone, we will have that agendized. And we will have, uh, again, another robust conversation about the direction that we need to go in together as a board. So if there's, go ahead and I'm going to.
Yes.
He moved to adjourn.
I stuck second in there.
All right. All right. Meeting adjourned. Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for watching.
Thank you, Gwen.
Bye, everybody. Bye.
Bye.